Banks hoping he is on his way and if you have one of these, please turn it to silent. And join us for the presidency leaves.
Let the leaders do the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
If anybody does want to address the board, there's sign up sheets in the back. It looks like everybody that's here already knows how this goes, so, but I'll say anyway. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We have no cards submitted.
You're kidding. All right.
He must be doing things right.
Yes, sir. He's putting his cards out.
All right, well then that brings us to three A, Matt's district meeting.
Can I, um, I handed out a, a, an agenda or just an enhanced management report as a few things. And if there's any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them and I'll discuss one of the things, a few things that came up and Tony may want to follow up during this time. We had a request from Department of Public Works, Lee County, to designate our pool property as a storm debris, just temporary disposed site. And, uh, we'd be glad to talk to them. Tony provided some comments to their agreement and we'll plan on bringing it back to the board. And when you sign up, it's for a 10-year period and you can opt out at any time. And, uh, it would, could be advantageous to us because if we're hiring people to pull debris out of the community and they only have to drive up Gateway Boulevard, it certainly reduces the cost. And, uh, so we're, we'd be glad to, uh, work with them and see if we can make this something to work out for them. And also mentioned that they only had one other site in Gateway. That was the school board property. And I had the plans for the new school sitting next to me, so I told them that might be short-lived. Um, so move on from there and also really-
May I? Are you familiar with the concept of quid pro quo?
Yes.
Well, when Lee County wants something from us, I think we ought to have a list of things that we would like from them. And any time I've been on this board, I can think of a bundle of things that we would like from them that would make our life easier.
Well, we could certainly close some of that with them because we will, I'll bring up some ideas and we'll be bringing them back to the board. Stoplights and shit, right about-
That's only the latest one.
Will you indulge me just for one second and that's it? I just wanted to know that Mr. Banks is here at 3:04 and I did neglect to call the rolls, so.
So technically I'm present in all time.
Yeah, that's true. So I just called the roll real quick. Our district attorney, Anthony Pierce, is here. Supervisor Tinkle, supervisor Banks, supervisor Feinberg, supervisor Guy, supervisor Flaherty, our district manager, Chris Schumaker, is here, and Stephen Blum, our CTA from Infomart, is here today. Okay, now I'll turn it over to you. Sorry, I did neglect to meet in.
Another, Chris and I talked to you a little bit about the, before the meeting, uh, and get Tony's input on this. What's the, or is there any prohibition of if we get the FPL easement, that that cannot be used for, uh, the same type of dump facility, emergency?
And, uh, Tony, Tony may be more conversant with I. FPL does have a lot of stringent requirements within that easement property.
Restriction.
And height, yeah.
Height.
And I, I do not know if, uh, emergency basis they'd allow that. We would just have to talk to them and then put in an application for use that goes to the real estate department with a $300, $400 fee.
The only thing I can think of would be any cranes or any, um, devices that would be used to offload that would exceed, I think there are limitations, 15 feet.
I think the 25.
Twenty-five, twenty-four.
I'll, I'll double check and work with Chris on that and I know they were concerned about location, but-
Because if it's 25, that is no issue at all. Uh, but 15 feet, if you get a lot of these cranes, like I came in on, uh, Irma, they were on the back of those trucks, they went well above 15 feet. But anyway, that's another possibility of land that would not be, uh, it's not the most pleasant sight to look at right now, it looks pretty scrubby. So that'd be a real good one to use and wouldn't have to, uh, mess up the, uh, area behind the pool right now.
Makes a good buffer.
Alternative, yeah.
Sure, and related to FEMA, we did get the, uh, the execution document, the part of the reimbursement we applied for is made into the governor's office, which means the check may soon be in the mail. But we applied for $321,000 in reimbursement requests. They're reviewing part of it, but this disbursement would be for $208,000. So that's, that's moving forward. And I want to just give, we're about done with all the work at the pool and soccer complex. We are putting a few add items on there, um, putting, putting in a new cat exterior cabinet counter copy of the dilapidated nature of the one that's there. Thank you, Ms. Flaherty, for bringing that to our attention. And, uh, we're also going to have all the, uh, buildings at the soccer complex painted. We had a vendor came in with a price of $8,100 to do all those buildings, including the pavilions, and with some, uh, excess money we had in that capital, we'll be moving forward with that.
And Chris, real quick, um, for those two facilities, both pool and the, uh, over the soccer park, when's, how regularly do we spray? Um, do, do we have pest control in those two areas?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. I know we have a pest control people out here monthly. I'll have to see where, what it is over there, but I'll be happy to check into it.
Yeah, especially like, you know, um, with the pool because of the water and stuff, that's kind of a breeding ground for, for some things. And soccer complex has a different level of issues because there's, there's food and stuff like that, so if anyone just take a look at it, I, there were a couple, um, people that just had mentioned to me, um, just within the, the soccer complex, um, some bugs and potential rodents, so we had-
I, I spoke to folks in a flag about that recently and I told them we'd take steps to take care of that.
Thanks.
Chris, you skipped the number four, the assessment methodology study. At the last meeting, you said something about the, uh, need to schedule a workshop. Will we be doing that? That's not going to be one that's an hour before the meeting or half hour before the meeting, is it? We'll never get that done in that-
We'll have that stand alone and with Russ said, he was originally scheduled to have this complete for the board in March. He said April, I said, what time in April? He's not sure, he's put it on his priority list and we hope to have it, you know, by like the third or fourth week, but as soon as-
Can we get some tentative dates to start, uh, reserving an afternoon or a morning, whatever, to, to do that later on?
And he told me by Friday he'd have a, uh, better date for completion, have that ready and presented. And, uh, we've also had some requests from Pelican to participate in those meetings and I told Mrs. Gepper we'd be glad to invite them and inform them of, uh, any activity there. And, uh, otherwise that, that's all I have unless somebody had some questions, there's just some, uh, updates on some projects we're working on and timeframes on, Tony.
And manager, if I may just briefly respond to Mr. Tinkle's question about the FPL property. I'll check the documents and I'm just double checking some perils involving the property that, call it, our CDA owns the corner of Livingston Road and Edible Beach Road in County County. It doesn't have the, it has transmission line joints, you know, similar to this, but that was used as a staging area for pollution debris at the hood. And so, uh, again, they've, I call the lines, not the same width necessarily as here. So I'll, I'll take a look at that. Thank you, thank you for your suggestion.
And, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Kenny. He has a few utility issues and updates on some projects we're working on.
Shit after you came home. You all, utility manager? Uh, we started after two setbacks. Uh, we've started and are about halfway through our Commonwealth lift station. It says Commerce, Commerce Lakes, it's actually Commonwealth. This is a very expansive, this is the, uh, the most expansive lift station upgraded that we've done so far. Be doing, uh, this is a 1987 original lift station, uh, probably the first rehab should have been about 15 years ago. Uh, the, the panel is in the original 1986 model. We've gotten, this has basically turned into a bowl. Uh, the parking mats drained completely into this lift station. We get about an inch of rain, we get about a foot of water sitting near the top of this lift station. About two years ago, uh, we were able to get it sealed really well. So we were able to, we had some more pressing issues with some of the other lift stations, uh, operations-wise, so we were able to actually push this one off, but this is by far the most expansive one we're doing. Um, we're switching all the ductile out, putting it into HDP, new pumps, new everything. We actually had to lift it up about two and a half feet, uh, and backfill the ground because it was just basically a, about a two-foot bowl. And everything in our range just pours into this lift station. Um, let's see, it's a very expansive one, um, and it's going to be about, it's going to be the most expensive one we've done. Um, but we are about halfway done and we're in a place where this lift station is, is located that we're just in the way wherever we are. We, we've really made an effort to stay out of, not to try to not to interrupt any of the businesses as best we could and with the elementary school right there. We're going to be, this is, this is about halfway done, um, with no snag so far luckily. Um, and the Fairway Allo sewer repair is slated to kick off next week. I sent out a tentative, uh, schedule for the residents and the HOAs. We met with the Gateway Greens Master Association and gave them, uh, our tentative schedule. Um, it is going to be subject to change, but we're hoping to start next Thursday.
Which station?
No, this is the Fairway Allos, the sanitary sewer repair.
Oh.
Um, we're going to put the wells in Thursday of next week and they'll be there for about four to five days. Once they dry it out, they're going to do the repair as fast as they can. Uh, we're in and out, uh, scheduled for nine days. Uh, we're going to do the best we can with traffic and we're, we're going out and talking to the residents and trying to let them know it's, it's going to be a mess and it's going to be, it's just going to be a mess.
Where do they get the power from the generators?
They're going to be on, they're going to be, they're sound boxed, uh, well pumps, just like our Thompson bypass pumps.
What's, what's fueling them?
Diesel, diesel fuel.
Oh, so they're going to be diesel?
If they're well points. They had, they have to do, they have to drill a provisionary well to find out which way they want to go.
So I'm assuming, my experience has been when you do well pumping, you do it 24 hours a day.
Yes.
Noise.
Yes. And I would say we've, we've-
Those people better be ready for it.
Yeah, we're trying to get as prepared for as we can. We have silent boxes, uh, just like our Thompson pumps. So if you're 10, 15 feet away, they're pretty, they're pretty, they're very quiet. Um, and we will be running pipeline through to the neighbor, to the residence yard for drainage. Um, but this, this is, this is going to be, uh, one of those kind of repairs. Uh, it's going to be a problem. You know, we're trying to do as best we can, but this, this is the time to do it, so we're going to do it as fast as we possibly can. And we're back with, um, Lenar and Pelican again with, uh, this time we're having issues with Lenar on the, their contractors are putting plug lines into their homes when they're doing them. They're not retrieving them, they're ending up in our lift station. So we're finding 15 to 20 of them with the connections, with the chains still attached to them in, in our lift station. So we set up a meeting with Lenar, brought him out there, showed him everything and told him that, um, that this is gonna, if this is going to turn into an issue. Uh, we had this before at Hampton when they did, um, Hemet Cove, got a plug stuck in a sanitary sewer, blocked the whole entire thing up, it turned into a whole day show of trying to get a bat plug out of, or a sewer plug out of a line. Um, so we trying to, we're trying to get this to Lenar to let them know that we're going to require them again to camera our sewers if we keep finding this problem. Because all it's going to take is one of them to get in there and block one of those sanitary sewer lines up and it's going to turn into a disaster. So we've, and in the past when we brought things to Lenar like this, operational issue, they're very responsive. We let them know what's going on. Um, so hopefully we, this will not turn into a big huge issue. And our irrigation system work is underway, if you have any questions on that, I believe that's on there.
These plugs four inches, six inches?
They range from, uh, four to six and some of them are two. But when they shrink down, they're, they're, they're about this big.
What are they plugging?
Uh, the, the sewer lines, uh, inside the house. It's their contract.
Inside the house.
Yeah, when they're doing, they're doing the pressure testing, I'm guessing is when they're doing it. And they're ending up not recovering them and they float down through, end up, and end up in the, uh, lift station. Usually it's the four inches to six inch connection, that's where they're doing it. They're, they're plugging, plugging that up. And for whatever reason, we don't know, but we've, we've gotten about 15 to 16 of them. We're getting about five or six a day that we're finding in the lift stations floating.
I think, Ms. Flaherty, you have a question?
Actually, I have a thank you for, for Isaac for calling me right there last Saturday, so I just wanted to-
And just to let you know, we did that repair on our, that's a big, big saving, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. Anybody else? Mike, did you have anything? Nope? Okay. That's district engineer, then. Yes, go ahead.
Just take a moment to, um, my copy and I lost the sheet, but I was going to let you know, we do have the gate up at the fun park now and we'll start locking that gate soon. It's a dawn to dusk thing, so it's going to take some staff time, but it should provide that overnight parking out there. And also, Mr. Tinkle, you had asked about the storm drain cleaning, we allocated the other $150,000 that was in the budget. Matt Tower indicated to hold his contract pricing for that additional work and he's going through the map set right now. He had a large set made to see how far he could get, but he'll hold the pricing on that and I'll be back at the next meeting with the map to show you, uh, exactly where that is.
How, how far done are they on that first contract we had on Gateway Greens?
Should be done the next week.
The next week? Because they've been fighting that water.
The whole time. But, uh, but they've been moving along. Part of it is, you know, we're finding things we need to fix while we're doing it.
If, if they can move to the north side, all that water level is way down right now because of 124, it'd be the perfect time to be cleaning those.
Right. And I put something in, it's more on the negative side, that we've taken steps to, uh, correct it, that we have a recent inspection by the Department of Health on, from the pool and we had five safety violations noted by the department at the pool. Hasn't happened before. Some of it had to do with automation, some of it had to do with staffing, but, uh, we corrected the issues, most of them were corrected that day, but it didn't happen. And, and some of them were minor, the label on a chemical container outside peeled off because of the weather. Some other things with the pH and chlorine levels a little bit too high. So like, so we're already taking steps, most of them were corrected that day, but it won't happen again. That's all I have.
District engineer?
Good afternoon, for the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. Um, three items on the agenda, the first is the status update. Um, we did add in there the schedule of completion and that's, uh, primarily based on what we have on the task authorizations. You'll notice a couple of the asterisks. I do want to point out a couple of things, you know, when we prepare these, they're, they're, uh, you know, a week and a half before this meeting, so there's even been a lot of activity since then. So, um, a couple of things to point out. Um, the second item on there, 1813 task authorization, that storage facility, um, we actually did get comments back from the county this week on, uh, with several items, so we're working to, uh, address that. Some of it related to the actual ERI, so, uh, we're working to address that. Um, the office building, that site design has been complete as far as the draft. Tyler's reviewing that, so we'll get that over to, uh, to Chris here in the next couple of days.
How long will it be before we go to bid on that?
Well, that, I think the first thing you got to do is go to permitting, so our plan is to submit on permitting probably by Monday or Tuesday for that.
So what, 60 days, 90 days?
Yeah, maybe, um, yeah. There's, there's not going to be a whole lot of work. I mean, you could even go to, you know, bid if you wanted while simultaneously with that, because I know Chris has the, I think you have the, the, it's supposed to come in June, right?
Oh, the building's 12 weeks out, so it's going, we could adjust that, but we're going to come to the next board meeting, an authorization to do the 50% deposit.
Was it August, were you slated August?
Well, I think, I think Chris would probably like it as soon as he can get it.
July.
August will be realistic, it should be in operational and people moving in in August.
Have we got the pitch on the out basin?
The out basin? I think that's out to bid.
It is not out to bid. Um, we had like one or two things, I think we got the advertisement, um, comments back, so I, I was talking to Steven on that and we're probably looking at early next week of releasing the, the advertisement for that.
The RV storage?
Yes, the RV, yeah. My yard, the storage.
Just to revert back, um, really quick to the building. In order to, to put the building in, there's, you know, furniture, there's all that kind of stuff, but just from a technical perspective, uh, phone lines and centralizing that, um, what, what's the, what's kind of the plan on, on that piece?
All right, we had a preliminary meeting with Florida Power because we did a different drop and meter drop back there for that facility and we're working with our IT people on phone connections. So really the big part with us is, uh, the site work and, uh, that would be all in about two days to level that pad back there and take compaction tests.
And then we'll just, so, I think, or we, we operate off a central server day or we, for the most part, through our computers, or they all just single?
No, we're, we're running from a central server.
Yeah.
So we're networked through and then, so we'll just run lines and the, the building will come pre-cable for phone and computer.
Okay.
So that will, that will all be done.
Wire in, plug and play and the water and sewer connections are right next to the building. Yeah, you have everything right here already, so power is the only thing you have to bring in from outside. Drainage, everything's, you know, set and ready, basically.
At the last meeting, I think I had this, was it on my desk I'm going, if everybody else kind of, it was the modular office building expansion preliminary budget, uh, total, total, grand total estimated at 350. Is that still on? What was the amount we had? I was thinking we had like 550? 550,000, Steven, in the budget?
We, we have between the two funds. Uh, the general fund has a piece of it and then the utility.
But what was the total?
I believe what your, your number was, I can-
Around 550?
Yeah.
And that 350 number also includes considerable renovation of this building, new flooring and painting.
I saw that and I was going to ask, how is that, is that going to be timed at the same time?
Well, what we're going to do is move as many people we can into the six offices and then consolidate and then come in and do the repair. And al, and also related to that money in the building fund, we're, um, going to be soon putting in all new directional microphones and a new recording system in here that direct records from the mics, um, straight instead of picking it up over there. So it'll make it a lot easier for folks taking notes and also for, say speaking into the microphone, you won't have to get up too close, it'll be directional coming back to you. And we also plan to tilt these monitors, replace them, so they're down at 45 degrees to lower the sightline.
Will the microphone differentiate the speaker?
Well, it won't differentiate the speaker, but where you are and instead of, again, picking up from across the room and people out there talking, um, or any background noise, it won't because it's going to be picking your recording up and going straight to the recorder.
Yeah, and, um, I'd be curious to see, uh, because I use a lot of different meeting systems, uh, web conferencing and video conferencing and things like that. And to the struggle at, when you're sitting at home, is what you're doing is you're looking at a camera that's facing up here, um, but there's a board book and there's different information that's really being shared. I, I would rather see, you know, the, the meeting book or something, if there's a presentation, than just staring at, uh, a pretty poor image of all of us sitting up here. So again, if there's, there's always opportunities to look into, um, different, you know, different meeting sharing systems. Technology's come a long way from, with that, so.
And, uh, we also took some studies recently, we revised, put some outlets right here so we can move the camera back to the ceiling and put a different unit in there. We did that in our solson. There's an electrical outlet right next to that and one in the ceiling itself.
So is, but that, these cameras aren't, well-
No, that's not functional, that's what we're going to do, is have, have the camera right there, set for the back of the room, so that it'll be better and we can change that.
And move it, move it up so it's-
That's wide angle, so you can tell when he's speaking.
Yeah, okay.
So do you have any questions on the task authorization summary?
Yes.
All right, the second item was the, uh, this is what the board had asked for a couple of meetings ago, was the, uh, facilities plan for the clean water CIP items that we brought before the board previously. So if that's something you want to move forward with as far as, um, having the ability to fund this through the SRF, the clean water program, that'd be for the irrigation and wastewater. You're not obligated to, um, you know, to do that work, but if you want to use those funds, you are obligated to at least go through the facilities planning process, just like we've done on the light banks.
In, in order for us to meet the timeline that we had in the five-year budget, we've got to get the facilities plan done, get that approved, get the plans done, get that approved, to be in bidding position to even initiate the ones that are in 2020, let alone 21, 22, 23.
Yeah, so-
So I don't see that we have much choice, that we've got to get this going.
And, Mr. Tinkle, the only comment I have is that $67,000, there is no money in the bud, engineering budget for that, so we'd have to transfer it appropriate from another source.
Your other option would be to wait until the next fiscal year and have that as a budgeted item.
When you're going to be in 20 and you've got facilities that have to be done or scheduled to be done that year, that's a little tight. Steven, what, what's, what's available?
So you would have two options here. First option would be to use fund balance from your general fund. Um, and you have it available, we talked about it, we talked about the fact that last year we had the extra that was put into your fund balance.
Which was?
It was, um-
450?
Yeah, yeah. And that's an un-audited number, but still solid. Um, and then there's the second option would be to go through your current, uh, capital projects that you have on slate for the rest of this year, um, which you're obviously now in April, and decide if there is any of those capital projects that you will not be able to complete this year. And then you could, as Chris mentioned, allocate those funds to cover this cost.
The problem we have is this is enterprise work predominantly, correct? So we got to stay on the enterprise side.
You would have to stay? Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if it is, if it is enterprise fund, then it's the same scenario. I mean, you have, um, extra money in, is that extra, but you have reserves in the utility fund, the same as you have in the general fund.
But the 450 was general fund?
The 450 is, yes.
That's what I thought.
Can't keep down.
So we need, we need to go to the equal fund in the enterprise, okay?
Correct. So and in the same scenario, you'd either look at the, um, funds in the enterprise reserve from operating, or again, we have a similar capital projects fund in the utility fund and you would do the same thing and say, here's what I budgeted, you know, which, which of these line items do we not need, or which of these line items do we want to move into next year's budget and then use those funds for this particular project now.
What's the amount of money that's in that fund that would avoid the transferring and or the delay of any of the, uh, projects?
Uh, that I'd have to look up for you.
To me, that'd be the best way of going.
Yeah, but I mean, there, there is sufficient funds to cover this, I can tell you that now, I don't know what the-
They covered the 67?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And, uh, as far, as far as the, uh, un-accomplished capital budgets, Kenny and his staff have been working very hard and we'll have that capital budget extended in the next month or two. So unlike previous years where we didn't spend those capital projects, um, ones we have for the pool, but in the utilities, um, with the wastewater work and the-
Well, now these capital or repair, replacement?
Um, capital.
Capital.
Yeah, all, all the lift station, you have replacements that we had in capital, which are the big dollar items. And the Thompson pump, those big dollar items, um, have almost all been accomplished and will be in the next 60 days.
So what's the total dollar value to date that we have in capital expenditures that were unanticipated?
Unanticipated in utilities.
Versus what we allocated?
Um, actually, we may, we may go over a little bit on the Commerce Lakes lift station and, uh, because of that repair we're doing on Fairway Lakes, so we'll actually be, uh-
I mean, if we had 500,000 dedicated in the budget, have we spent 500,000 to date?
Close to it. Well, yeah, we're running along projects.
So I guess the question is, what did we have budgeted?
You had budgeted, uh, almost 1.2 million dollars in the enterprise fund, of which You had budgeted almost one point two million dollars in the enterprise fund, of which you've spent half a million dollars, and there's, you know, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, but this is through February, and if you spent a good chunk of that, you know, then, then obviously you probably don't have anything coming out of this, you know, particular projects, the only thing, the big chunk of money left in here is the office building expansion that we just talked about, so beyond that, there isn't a whole lot of other projects here that you haven't touched or are talking about getting to, so then, you know, you still have the money that you could come from your operating fund, which, you know, is the money that's been accumulated over years, some of which is assigned to connection fees, we've talked about connection fees, can't use that, but you still would have maintenance money that you could use and other operating reserves that you could still, you would have plenty to cover this.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes, okay, thank you. Mr. Bloom, we have three hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars from leftover from last year, is any of that usable, that you gave me, that's the amount we gave?
No, and that's not usable for this activity, because that's general fund.
That's general, okay, thank you.
I'd make the motion that we proceed with the work and, Stephen, you provide us with the basis of the safest funding transfer, I wouldn't want to interfere with the capital reserve under repair and replacement reserve, because we don't know what we're gonna hit with next.
I'd like to know where the money's gonna come from before I vote on this, I want to know where, what we're taking away from what other projects or where we're getting the money before.
I'm suggesting not taking it from projects, I'm taking it from the excess that he's talking about.
Say again, here, I did it here.
I'm, I'm not proposing to take it from the transfer of any of the existing projects, I'm talking about taking it forward and from the excess that's in the fund.
And I understand that, I'd like to see it come forward, back to the board with exactly where the funding's gonna come from, and then let us decide if that's really what we want to do, rather than just shooting from the hip and behind that, you know.
What's?
Figure out where this is, how we're gonna change it.
What are the accounts that are available, Steve? Because I don't think this is this complicated.
Well, you really only have two.
That's what I thought.
You're gonna have from the operations reserve or the repair and replacement reserve, those are the only two, based on rough estimates through the end of last year, you had about three million dollars in the operations reserve, and you had about seven hundred and twenty-four thousand in the repair and replacement reserve.
And that's all enterprise fund?
That's all hundred, you have a hundred percent enterprise, and this is stuff that's been generated over the years through your rate revenue that we're talking about, meaning I am not talking about connection fees or any debt service, you know, funds, this is strictly operations and repair, renewal and replacement.
When the connection fee money rolls in, assuming that we get that approved, is there any provision against a portion of that repaying back to sixty-seven thousand dollars since it is for capital?
I, I, the connection fee increase, there are only four new.
Capital expansion.
Expanded facilities.
I realize that.
Occasion by, as opposed to repair replacement.
Right, no, we have, yeah, we have tried to be, you know, tried to be, we are very clear on that piece of it, it can only be used for capital expansion of your facilities, that's what the.
But that doesn't include the engineering to design the capital facility?
If it's for an expansion, yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
This is a repair replacement?
It is a repair replacement.
No, this is, this is CIP, this is, this is expansion, this is new, new infrastructure.
Yes, this, this work we're talking about is all new.
Okay.
Infrastructure.
If you, if, that's how you're classifying it, if you guess that.
Which is, what's.
Then, you have, and just to give you a number, through September, you have one point four million dollars that is associated with connection fees, that's the amount.
Knowing what we just discussed, what is your recommendation as to which account to go with that?
Then I would start with, I would start with the connection fees, because if it's truly expansion, that is your most restrictive category, and if you're not gonna have a whole lot of expansion, and this is immediate, then I would start with the connection fees.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not sure if this is an item that's listed in the agenda as an action item as far as all the engineering work we're talking about, or the actual capital improvement.
No.
Talking just engineering today?
This is the engineering work to do.
Just engineering.
Yes, that's all.
Just to do the, prepare the facilities.
Yeah, just to prepare the facility, so I, I would then change the motion to be more specific of what Steve is saying, is to take it from the, would you say the capital?
It's the connection, yes, capital reserve related to connection fees.
Capital reserve related to connection fees.
And where do we find the capital reserve related to connection fees, what, what pages that on in the, in the February financial statements is that we just?
It's, it's, it's not a separate page, I mean, I can start, I can start pulling it out and separating it, but right now it would just be in the balance sheet on the bottom of the enterprise fund when it shows you everything combined, it shows you the entire amount, it does not show it split up, and I can certainly start splitting it up, I can start providing, you know, schedule, obviously I'm looking at right now, which splits it up between all the categories, it's just not something that we have shown in the, in the financials regularly split like that.
You may want to consider doing that.
Yeah, I have no problems, it's.
Once, once we get the facility planned, we have the option then to proceed to design with that, that would be meeting the time schedule for whenever it's supposed to be built, some of that designing to lay three, four, or five years, others need to be done quickly to be able to implement the CIP.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, just going through, if this is the, it's a page ten, is this the clean water CIP facilities plan, Danny, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
And, and I guess for clarification, I think it's important to identify those that are attributable to.
To expansion.
Or expansion, because I'm looking at, one, enclosure for the existing high-service pump station, doesn't sound like it's attributable, so I think we need to separate out.
I could argue that every one of these are attributable to, easily.
I'd, I'd suggest that we have an analysis by, by Danny and Stephen, from a financial perspective that these qualify.
And, and it doesn't have to be an all or nothing approach, I mean, if the facilities plan is, is covering twenty-five percent or thirty percent of expansion, and we can use thirty percent from connection fees, I, I think the good news is, is all of these categories, you have the sufficient funds to cover this, should you elect to, we just, it's, we want to be very clear though about making sure we've got this expansion covered, that aspect of it, so we're pulling it from the right bucket.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yeah.
Mr. Bloom, where in the budget is that?
Well, no, that's the point, this is not in the budget.
It's not?
That's why we're having this discussion, because it would have to be, it would have to be directed by the board to pull from some other bucket, because it is not in the budget.
But where are you gonna pull it from the budget?
It would not be, meaning it would have to be added, it's almost like an addition to the budget, where the board would say, please use X reserves from this particular reserve, and you're almost like adding it to your, your particular plan, because it's not in there.
Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Danny, you've got a very specific amount of compensation to do this for sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars, which leads me to the question, how much is the actual, the actual clean water work gonna cost, this is gonna be a multi-million dollar operation?
Yeah, we, we presented that previously.
Well, maybe you did, but my memory is not like.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the millions.
Pardon?
It's in the millions.
Yeah, this was the CIP we did, we were up around, as I recall, eight, eight, nine million dollars.
Okay, I just want to make sure we all understand where we're headed on this thing.
Yeah, that was over a five-year period, too.
Yeah, no, sorry, who's that, I, I was gonna address Tony's comment, I'd say, you know, the only two that might be arguable as not being expansion-related would be under the irrigation, the fourth bullet, the enclosure that Tony had mentioned, but again, like Mr. Tinkle's saying, I think you could even make an argument for that, because it's, the reason being is that that particular is not, but you're protecting your infrastructure that is, and one of the items on there is to replace the jockey pump with a high-service pump, so you're adding a new pump, so the enclosure would be to protect your pumps that are part of that to provide that service, and the other one under the wastewater would be the fence and driveway improvements, the rest of those items are associated with, with new growth and are required because of that.
Fence and driveway improvements and the master lift stations?
Yeah, I said if you want to, you know, pull that from it.
Well, I'm looking at, thinking, because again, I just don't want anybody challenging the utilization of those, because they're supposed to be, you know, capital improvements required by increased demands or new demands, and those don't appear to be.
Right, well, the twelve-inch, going, going from top to bottom, the twelve-inch irrigation main, that's because with the new growth, so, so hopefully that's, you know, the irrigation well is the same.
Twenty-inch main, yep.
The jockey pump is the same, that's being replaced with a larger pump to provide the additional capacity, the standby emergency power is, is also, if we don't have the, the power, then you're not gonna be able to, to supply that, so the wet weather discharge and the two million gallon are definitely associated with that, on the wastewater, the twenty-inch force main, the twelve-inch force main, and the emergency bypass pump, so you can actually handle that additional flow during power outage, I, I would argue all of those easily are associated with that, so the only two that I think would, you know, could be argued not would be the enclosure, and you can certainly approve it and pull those out, those are, those are like minor items, those are probably the smallest ticket items on this entire thing.
To answer Bill's question from the budget pages thirty-five and thirty-six, the wastewater side of that, not deducting anything that Danny just talked about, was three point four million total through FY twenty-five and the, or I'm sorry, FY twenty-three, and the irrigation was six point four, so the total's about nine point eight million, inclusive of the items that were, might be a little shaky on capital related, connection fee related.
You agree with that?
Yes.
You agree with that?
Yes, I think it's, it's all solid in some of those things.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna obviously have to go rely on the engineers for some of this, but yes, if, if it's just those small pieces, then, then I think we're okay.
Chris, that's what I, sorry, I was looking at you, when I asked that question, I should clarify, you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, it's, that's all solid capital to increase capacity for the system, and the two, like Danny said, minor items, he mentioned, are those the lowest cost items in there?
Yeah, I'd, I'd pull those just to be, just to be safe, so it's, it's not a.
Yeah, again, it's increased, if it's to increase capacity to address increased demand on the system.
And it is.
It's not replacing existing facility.
Right.
Because light facilities, well, but the master lift stations are existing master lift stations.
Right, but the emergency pumps are a new item that would provide that ability to pump that additional capacity during those power outages.
But it's not occasioned by the master lift station.
I, I mean.
I disagree on the.
Okay, that's.
On the burdens of bypass.
You probably look at maybe two hundred and fifty thousand out of the total thing that could be argued.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to keep anything that could be a challenge, so.
But at that time, you can always ratio it to, if, if it's two percent and sixty-seven thousand, then twelve hundred dollars, Chris could write the check.
Cover.
Every proportion is attributable to it. Yeah, okay. Yeah, we, we keep, we keep track of that, that's not that difficult.
Okay.
So do we want to bring this back, correct it, or is everybody comfortable to vote on this today? Let me ask you a question.
I, I guess, this is, this is the beginning of such a big thing, I think you ought to bring it back, totally researched, so that there's no question from the attorney, the engineer, or the manager, or anybody.
If you can do that, then, Chris, would you put together then, show the, we had a document, I think it was in the documentation that the financial advisor did, as I recall, we took the CIP all the way out and divided it into columns as to whether it was general and/or it was enterprise, and whether it was repair and replacement or capital, pull those, recap those, and we'll shade them and have the dollar value of the capital costs that's, we're talking about on the water, wastewater and the irrigation.
And we'll assign, assign which fund that.
Yeah, we'll sign.
That's what comes up.
And keep in mind, it's an estimate, it's an estimate.
No, I appreciate that, I think it helps for the record and for any questioning in the future.
So you'll withdraw your.
I would withdraw it to defer it to next meeting.
Right, at the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, the last item.
By the way, as I could, and again, turning it up there, Chair, following up, I think the board's, at the last meeting, the suggestion was that when there's a, that the memorandum have a recommendation that could utilize as a motion to be adopted or recommended to approve.
Yes, please.
I'll prepare a memo to come up with.
Thanks.
The last item is, at the last board meeting, the discussion.
Look, Lola's, I think we're getting half his margins, his motion only should be to do the work for which he's requesting a contract.
That's.
It should be the financial advisor that prepares the motion on.
The funding.
How, the.
Or Stan.
Yeah.
Unless, unless any of us.
Nope, I'm gonna bring back a revised task authorization along with a memo requesting authorization for that item.
That's fine.
We good?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
The last item was on Lake One Twenty-Four, this is on the golf course side, for a stretch of about three hundred and fifteen feet of repair, Tyler put together this memo along with the cost using the unit price, so if this was something that the board wanted to entertain, the two items that he had in there were to have the contractor supply the material and install it using the unit price that he has, where the second option would be to steal from Chris's stockpile, if Chris has material that's available.
If it's, if it's concerned, it's not sealed.
Okay, so first is, is it something the board wants to move forward, and then if so, you've got, you've got two options there, and you do see the photos.
Yeah.
It is, it is an area that is a, you know, significant erosion, it's an area of high volume, machine flow.
Is the fabric available, Chris?
Well, the fabric probably is, we actually allocated most of that for the next two lakes, it's been sold in that tower.
But it's three hundred and fifteen feet available.
I think three hundred and fifteen feet, the only showing that would be the anchors, the number of anchors, because you could probably order some in a week or two to get those ones for me.
Now, originally that had been dedicated to the flowways, is there still enough for the flowways?
Yeah.
This gets used for this?
Yeah, the flow, the flowway portion of it that we're gonna use, the TRM, was confined to the Stony Brook Canal, and we have footage available with that in the two lakes.
Okay.
And what we did is, the percentage of that material was paid for originally by the SRF, but it was about a seventy-thirty split, and the thirty percent that we paid for that wasn't SRF, was in anticipation and use it for the conveyance, and that material's gone up about twenty percent since that material was ordered, so, but we, we have enough, three hundred and fifteen feet.
We, we have to be careful on that, the conveyance, because that wasn't SRF approved.
But we, we paid for thirty percent.
We did it in the SRF.
On, on the general fund, I believe, yeah.
Correct, right.
Because of the storm.
And then the, the last part of that is, you know, how get, speaking of how you would fund things, there is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars remaining in contingency.
In One Pond One Twenty-Four?
Yeah.
I made the motion to proceed with the change order with Metro to do this work on this three hundred and fifteen feet, it's clean down dangers.
Is part of the change order be that the district provide the material?
I.
I'm, I'm guessing from what Chris said that that is available, so yes.
And I, I'm a little queasy about.